Uh, let's see. Uh, the dialogue.
I hate when they did tell us it's.
I mean, I really don't.
No.
Hang on a minute, pass it.
Yeah.
It was interesting when I was walking the, uh, walking the area. Yeah. Yeah. I was walking the area and we didn't get home. Um, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you want me to move this?
To just on the show again.
Yes.
To be a smart.
I just wanted to.
It's a sass thing.
Yeah. It's crazy, man.
She never even lets your mom.
Yeah.
I remember the worst part falling.
How'd you get that?
He was in the marines, he said. Never volunteer for anything.
Oh.
But did you volunteer in the marines?
Yeah, I assure you, he was drafted, so it took care of him. The guy just don't know what it's different. Went in and said, where you want to go? I said, it all goes to the leagues.
Everything.
And, and like, it's on your way.
She's like, if it being you get, I'm like. Yeah. Right? You don't do that.
So we do. I guess we should give, we should, I guess we should.
Don't worry, it would have come to find you.
Oh, we know that. We know that.
What's it?
Because there were so many people here tonight. Exactly. Notice it. Really, nobody got to.
What the hell is he doing?
I'm ready.
Good evening. I'd like to call the December ninth, two thousand twenty-four Borough Council meeting to order. Will a clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under chapter two thirty-one, Public law nineteen seventy-five, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice scheduled to, for some newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinski.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Manko.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Present.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskonka.
Here.
Borough Administrator Frederick Carr.
Present.
Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, present.
Well, everyone, please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by the salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, the nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Now is the time for public comments, list, limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion, limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There will be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I would close the public comment portion of the meeting. The meeting minutes for November twelfth executive session are on the agenda for approval. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion and accept the minutes as typed?
So moved second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, seconded by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting minutes for November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting are on the agenda for approval. Are there any comments or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got two quick, um, on page nine, Kimberly Kolep Sack. It was actually Kolep Sack. Kolep made a name, married name to Sack, so.
Hold on. I gotta get to page one. Okay, page nine, go ahead.
Yeah, that's page nine at the bottom.
Uh huh.
And then just a correction on page ten.
Well, I didn't hear the correction, so I was pointing at the page.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what the correction.
It's Kolep Sack. So it should be hyphenated, I believe it's K-O.
Okay.
It's like the street, and then S-A-K.
Okay.
Just I didn't know how pertinent that is for, for the name of the record. And then, uh, page ten, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councilman Revolinski noted that money is taken from the electric to balance the water budget as opposed to taking taxes. Correction on that, it's not taken from electric to balance the water budget, it's taken from the electric to balance the borough's taxes.
To borough's taxes.
So I didn't want to be misrepresented there.
Okay. Take a vote to approve them as, as amended, not as typed.
May I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, seconded by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting minutes for November twelfth, regular, uh, executive session, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth executive session, are on the agenda for approval. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept the minutes as typed?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ordinance, public hearing on the second reading. The following ordinance was introduced on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and published in accordance with law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after the reading. Will clerk please read ordinance twenty-four fifteen fifty-two by title?
Ordinance to amend chapter twenty-five water of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
Please.
So moved.
Do we need, do we need to do, uh, public hearing on it first or not?
Yes, you have to move and second it, and then you can talk about it.
Sure, second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Resilin, uh, Resilinsky, sorry. I will now open a public hearing for ordinance twenty-four fifteen fifty-two. Please state your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to the comments on this ordinance only. Seeing none, I will close audience comments. Uh, does council have any comments? Seeing none.
No, no, notice of the tap one.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry. This is the tap fee. Sorry. From the tap.
Yeah, the tap.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm not on. You're good, you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Ordinance introduction, first reading. This ordinance introduction of twenty-four fifteen fifty-three, there'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The in, this is introduction summary will be published as required by law, and a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty AM, four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance twenty-four fifteen fifty-three by title?
Ordinance to amend chapter twenty-five water, section twenty-five dash four point one, water rates of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
You have heard the reading of this, uh, ordinance, may I have a motion, please?
I move that this ordinance be adopted, or adopted, read, and then to be adopted on the December twenty-third meeting.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, seconded by Councilman Manko. Are there any, uh, comments?
Yes, uh, I'd like to read comments that I have here. I appreciate all the work that was put in by Council President Revolinski and our CFO, Mr. Zenga. I feel that by lowering the minimum threshold that we have had, that we had the previous existing water rate, to the existing water rate hurts the lower utilizers, whether they be seniors or single adults. For those that are complaining about the rates on the highest or third tier, it's time to think about the precious commodity that is clean water. You realize that we can no longer take it for granted. We can call it conserving, preserving, or sustainability. Something must be done that is fair to all the residents. In the drought that we sustained, summer into fall, keeping sprinklers going and watering trees was necessarily going to be costly. Inflation has reared its ugly head into all aspects of our lives. I'm hopeful that the future is brighter. That's it.
Is there anybody else?
Um, I'll, I'll just add something for, uh, for the public. If you guys aren't looking at this ordinance, sorry, I moved the microphone a little bit closer.
Thank you.
Between the, uh, water and sewer, between what was and what is being proposed, the minimum goes from seven thousand five hundred gallons to five thousand four hundred gallons, there's an increase of nine dollars and three cents per quarter. The first tier, uh, which is proposed to go from five thousand four hundred gallons to four times that amount, which would be twenty-one thousand six hundred gallons, that change is an increase of forty-one cents per thousand gallons. However, because the old structure had a tier that was at fifteen thousand to twenty-one thousand, that amount for usage in that area goes down by four cents, or four dollars and one cent per thousand gallons. And lastly, the highest tier, the highest users to see the biggest amount of change is going up at twenty-one thousand gallons and higher, to be billed at thirty-eight seventy-five per thousand gallons. That is an increase of fourteen dollars and sixteen cents per thousand gallons. That is your summary. So most of the people who are minimum users, if you're at five thousand four hundred gallons, your bill is going up nine dollars and three cents per quarter.
I'd just like to thank Councilman Revolinski for all the work he put in on this. I mean, we went round and round. We try to keep it, you know, the, uh, bills down for the seniors, and we try to keep their bills down for the regular residents, and, uh, it was a lot of struggle, but I'd like to thank, I'd just say thank you, Rich.
I'm gonna vote aye, and I'd like to thank, uh, the mayor, Councilman Potter, and our Borough Council, Peter Vignolo, for pushing this across the line, so that's an aye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to thank Peter Vignolo for pushing this across the line as well. Do what I can.
You're so great, Peter.
Ordinance introduction, first reading. This ord, this introduction of this ordinance, twenty-four fifteen fifty-four, there will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The ordinance, the introduction summary will be published as required by law, and a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Full copies of this, of the ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty AM, four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Will clerk please read ordinance twenty-four fifteen fifty-four?
Ordinance to amend chapter twenty-six sewer, section twenty-six dash seven point nine sewer use charges of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any council comments?
Same as before, those numbers were based on both combined water and sewer, so the total minimum increases for water and sewer combined is the nine dollars and three cents. Just wanted that to be clear, not nine for water, nine for sewer. That's combined.
I'd just like to say, uh, it's, it's strange how our sewer costs more than our water, but that's what they do to us, though.
Okay, will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Authorization of payments of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we'll have the authorizing of payments of municipal obligations. Will clerk please res, read the resolution by title?
Resolution twenty-two four dash three twenty-one, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the borough of Milltown, in the total amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
You heard the reading in this resolution, are there any questions? May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, seconded by Councilman Collins. Will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are to be considered to be routine in nature, and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. None? Thank you. Um, will clerk please read the consent agenda resolution, please?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its December ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, resolutions twenty-two four dash three twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four dash three thirty-one. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the borough of Milltown that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read in its entirety at its December ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent resolution.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, seconded by Councilman Collins. Will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
We have the reports from elected officials. Council President Revolinski?
Uh, for Ford Avenue, still ongoing, uh, we, it looks like we should hear something in January, so you can go through Christmas without worrying about hearing anything about Ford Avenue for now. Um, as far as finance goes, uh, I'm thankful that we've got some rates that, uh, whether we like them or not, we could all agree to move forward with those, at least for the, uh, the next council meeting. Next up is, of course, going to be the electric rates, which we're looking at a one-point-one-million-dollar increase. I mentioned this at the last meeting, we talked about it in depth in September. This is beyond our control, this is direct costs that are coming in from, uh, the electric providers in the state. So with that, uh, if we wait longer, the amount has to be compounded into a shorter time period. Uh, if new rates are adopted in January, you guys are probably looking at nine months to generate that revenue, because it has to be received by the borough before December thirty-first. So, uh, our CFO has that information, uh, I asked him, based on kind of what we looked at here, that clearly that, you know, the governing body doesn't have much appetite for increasing the minimum based on, uh, our cost of operation, and therefore we should anticipate it being a rate increase based on consumption or utilization. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, electrical department, a pole transfer with a new transformer was completed on Albert Avenue to replace an old pole that damaged due to rot. American flags were removed from our utility poles. Holiday snowflakes had been installed. Department members assisted DPW with holiday decorating. Power was connected to the Boy Scout Christmas tree trailer. A broken neutral conductor was repaired on a house on Albert Avenue. A service drop was installed on a new house on Highland Drive. Department members did some troubleshooting on several electrical heaters in the borough facilities that were not functioning. Parts have been ordered. Four streetlights were replaced, five streetlights were replaced with energy-efficient LEDs. Line clearance was performed on the senior center, dead branches were removed on several trees on Fire Road. Is that right? Fire?
The Fire Road.
Three electrical meters were replaced. Maintenance was performed on, at the substation. One bucket truck was repaired. The Digger Dietrich pole truck is out re, for repair, getting repaired. Our oldest bucket truck is out of service while the vendor sourced parts. Department received a new pole trailer to replace an obsolete unit. Various work orders from the billing department were issued and assisted with discrepancies that were encountered in the water utility. Along with daily work orders, the daily pump check, the water and sewer department has the following. A hydrant was replaced on Reeve Avenue, there was water main break on Crestwood Drive. The assistant water supervisor oversaw the replacement of lead water line to the main and approved the job. Hydrant flushing continued twice a month at Ryder's Lane and South Brook Drive per DEP requirements. And I'd also like to say thanks to the, uh, water department for repairing the Desmond Avenue this past week. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Manko?
Uh, regarding the rec department, uh, winter registration is now open for adult yoga, men's basketball, and women's volleyball. The deadline to register for youth basketball, excuse me, is January third, and spots are still available. Volunteer coaches are always welcome, and the program will start on January twenty-fifth. On Monday, December sixteenth, please join us for an ice skating family fun night. Please register your family for this event on Community Pass. Take in all the holiday lights and beautifully decorated window displays in NYC, and join the rec department for a bus trip on Thursday, December nineteenth. Also, please register on Community Pass for that event as well. Friday, December sixth, was the annual tree lighting, and though it was a cold night, it was a huge success, and the rec department would like to thank everyone that came out to support the kickoff of the holiday season. Special thanks to Mayor George Murray for lighting the tree, the Milltown Fire Department for always making sure Santa arrived safe to help light up Milltown, and for the wonderful treat bags for the kids to enjoy, the RE/MAX team for delicious hot chocolate, cookies, and a TV rabbit, Miss Gary Rittman with Toys for Tots, I'm sorry, Mr. Gary Rittman with Toys for Tots, Miss Hengelli and the very talented JK Band, the DPW crew for all of their help in getting town hall decorated for the big night, Russ Einbinder for supplying the sound system and capturing, capturing all of the great times and, uh, things going on there. The children in the Fresh Theater Arts Program did an amazing job of putting on their end-of-season production of Beauty and the Beast on Tuesday, November nineteenth. The next session is already being planned. The Milltown Recreation Department would like to thank everyone for the support of the past year, and can't wait to kick off two thousand twenty-five. Uh, a lot of good things are always on their website, and also registering for Community Pass is just helpful in getting everything you want to get done in this town. Additionally, I know at the tree lighting, uh, the police were involved in a little, uh, a little cringe action, which was always a good three-atrix, and just, uh, nice things that, uh, you know, I think kids remember how, just makes an impression, and, uh, kids love that, and just falls in the whole thing. So, thank you guys for that. Uh, we're going to the library. Tomorrow is the Board of Trustees' monthly meeting at six-thirty, which is open to the public. Wednesday, December eleventh, is the drop-in play at ten-thirty AM, and tween craft, personalizing win holiday gift tags at three PM. Thursday, December twelfth, there is a movie matinee at three PM featuring Home Alone. Saturday, December fourteenth, Friends of the Library will be having a Jingle Jangle jewelry and accessory sale from ten o'clock AM to one-thirty PM. Also on Saturday will be crochet for beginners at eleven AM. Monday, December sixteenth, at six-thirty, Irene Curran will discuss Charles Dickens and A Christmas Carol. Registration is required. Wednesday, December eighteenth, is a drop-in craft, uh, developing snowmen at eleven AM. Thursday, December nineteenth, Craft Corner in the library will be doing sport with gingerbread houses at three PM. Registration is also required for that. Saturday, December twenty-first, Frosty Fun and More Bingo. Bingo, cookie frosting, pizza, and a surprise guest, starting at ten-thirty AM. Registration is also required for that event. I'm gonna start saying registration is required for most of the events. Also on Saturday, December twenty-first, Read to a Pooch at twelve-thirty, December twenty-eighth at eleven AM, Crochet for Beginners. Monday, December thirtieth, Adult Yoga at nine fifteen AM. Uh, registration is required for that as well. The library will be closed on December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, thirty-first, and January first of two thousand twenty-five. The staff would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Uh, additionally to that, on the website, I know the, uh, the library has a new shed that's in back, if you haven't noticed, uh, but they are starting to work on what is called the Library of Things, which is, uh, everything from tools to party supply to cooking things to just random items that, uh, that could be helped out, that could be available to you for the town, uh, with your library card. And they have a list on their website of things they are accepting as donations, things they are expecting to have. It's an interesting concept, it is around, um, it's not groundbreaking, but it's certainly, they're on the newer side of it, and, uh, take a look there and see if there's anything that you might be able to help the town with. And, uh, beyond that, I think both of those entities have done great work this year, and, uh, it's been nice to be a part of them. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilman Poznanski?
Sure. I'm gonna start with the Milltown Senior Center highlights. Our upcoming bus trips for the end of December include Hamilton Market Fair, Boskov's, Ollies in Lawrenceville, Delicious Orchards, Wick Plaza, the Amish Market, and Amazing Savings. Please check the calendar for specific days and times. Additionally, please remember to register as soon as possible, as the bus can only fit ten people. As with any activities events, please sign up on the bulletin board in the senior center or contact Debbie at D Cuddy at Milltownborough dot com. The VNA nurse will be here on Tuesday, December seventeenth, from twelve to three PM. Please sign up on the bulletin board if you would like to meet with her. New participants are always welcome. The senior center will be closed on Wednesday for Christmas and will not be delivering Meals on Wheels on that day. We are also closed at twelve PM on December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first. If you know anyone that is interested in receiving Meals on Wheels, please contact Debbie at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-zero-six-eight-one. And for the DPW report, um, they have put up, uh, the holiday decorations prepared for the tree lighting, which was a success. Prepared various boards on the footbridge. The DPW staff has helped repair the hydrant on Reeve and water main break on Crestwood. And I am touring the Swindman property and cabin with, uh, Ralph Jasnowski either this Thursday or Friday, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Milltown Police Department, for the month of November, Milltown Police Department responded to eleven-hundred-and-ninety-eight calls for service. During this period, seventy-six radar details were conducted in numerous locations, four-hundred-and-twenty-three motor vehicle stops were made, and eighteen motor vehicle accidents were investigated. There were also twelve arrests, uh, made, which were, which included DWI, shoplifting, and a warrant. As the snowy season begins, we kindly remind everyone the following important parking rules and responsibilities to ensure a safe and smooth winter for all. During the snowfall, please remove all vehicles from roadways after one hour of continuous snowfall. Do not return vehicles to the road until the storm has ended and the roads are fully plowed. Parking on sidewalks, blocking fire hydrants, or parking in others driveway without permission is prohibited. Vehicles requiring maintenance must be removed from the street before the storm begins. Any vehicle left on the roadway in violation of Borough Ordinance twenty-three dash five-point-three is subject to a towing and/or summons. Please avoid throwing snow back on the plowed roads, and if you lack off-street parking, designated borough-owned parking lots are available for use. For questions about parking, please contact the police department at seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-one-one-zero-zero. Thank you for your cooperation and commitment to keeping our community safe and accessible this winter. As of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the police department stopped using Dixiel and switched to Civic Ready for mass communications relating to emergency news and important information. To receive emergency messages only, text the word Milltown to three-eight-two-seven-six. To receive messages from other borough offices, download the app Civic Ready for Apple or Android phones. You can also stop, uh, sign up on the borough website under the heading How Do I, and click Alerts and Notifications. Don't wait, sign up today. From the Milltown Fire Department, there were a total of twenty-five incidents for From the Milltown Fire Department, there were a total of 25 incidents for the month of November, which included 13 fire calls, four drills, one meeting, three special assignments, and four work details. On Saturday, December 21st, please keep an eye out for Santa Claus as the Milltown Fire Department and Rescue Squad will be escorting him through town. Listen for the sirens to know when it'll be your turn to ask Santa and his crew a Merry Christmas. On November 16th, the Milltown Fire Department celebrated George Stillwell's 50 years of service. He's only the fourth member of the department to reach this tremendous milestone. George has also responded to over 4,000 calls. On behalf of the mayor and council, we congratulate George for his 50 years of service to our community. Members are needed. Candidates that are interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop down by the firehouse on Monday evenings at 6:30 or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. From the Milltown Rescue Squad, in November, a total of 93 service calls were recorded via in-town, on the New Jersey Turnpike, and mutual aid to our surrounding communities. Year-to-date, the cumulative number of service calls stands at 1,079. The Rescue Squad is looking to recruit new talent to join their ranks. They're accepting applications for their winter onboarding process. Anyone that's interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org. Applications for January 2025 need to be submitted by tomorrow, December 10. And for the Fourth of July, the Milltown Fourth of July Committee invites you to join us Saturday, March 22nd, at the Milltown American Legion for our annual Celebrity Bartender event. Please mark your calendars and stay tuned for more details in the new year. And the Fourth of July Committee and all of our emergency service departments wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Zamborana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have an environmental commission report tonight. Our Board of Health last meeting was held on the 26th of November. That will be the last meeting of this year. The new Board of Health will take place, or the committee will be made up of new members in the new year at REORG. Our Revitalization Committee meeting tomorrow is canceled due to the holidays and for other conflicts due to the holidays. I would mention that revitalization, I hope people have, or folks in town have looked at the planners by the town clock and to see the decorations that were put together there by our master gardener, Bunny Jasko, and her helper, Sue Woland. Our Human Relations Committee meeting was canceled last Tuesday due to, again, conflicts with, and scheduling issues with the holidays. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports from professionals?
No report time, Mr. Mayor.
No report time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carr, do you have a report?
Just again, a reminder to the council, following up on my email from last week, we are once again swirling around and arguing with the Department of Environmental Protection regarding the trihalomethane levels which we exceeded because of the running average. So, just real short, we talked about before, in our previous reporting period, we went over the number. It generated a mailing, which will then go out to the public again. But I think the important part of this conversation is that we didn't exceed the level. It's just, we've run into the math of the running average that DEP requires. The way to look at this is that, you know, you did really well, you did really poorly doing a test in high school. You tanked that test because you were not paying attention, and now it's going to take you forever to get good grades, bring that average up to a passing level. That's where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. For Claire, Margaret Carter, May?
Just a few things for vital statistics. So far through November 30th, our office has processed 36 marriage license applications. And for death certificates, as of November 30th, we've processed 1,163 in comparison to 546 last year. And anyone that's interested in volunteering to serve on a board or committee in town, please submit a citizen leadership application. They can be found online as well in my office, and appointments to these vacancies will be made at the reorganization meeting on January 6th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Old business. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
I would want to, I don't mean to lead, but I know some points we had talked about, something about maybe assessing a fee or basically finding people that are leaving rubble on buildings they knocked down, especially when they've knocked them down, just to avoid paying higher property taxes. And I know we never really followed up with it, and I know there's a lot of other mitigations that go with some of those properties. But maybe going forward, I know we have a short month. Maybe we can reexamine that. Maybe we can think about it as the year starts or comes to a close. I know we had some bait work originally, or some model of...
Yeah, we had a draft vacant lot ordinance, but Mr. Vignola was working on that for us. Obviously, the water rates took precedence over that. He has assured me that next year he'll work on it again if the council wants to see it. But I think, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong here, that like, this body can't introduce an ordinance that the next body would have to adopt.
Now, you need to take everything in this calendar year, so for all intents and purposes, that's going to be something for 2025 to take care of. Although, as I did indicate to you, Council President, I will present that to the mayor and council next year for their consideration. You are correct that the water sewer rate issues have taken a fairly substantial amount of my time recently and prevented me from getting to that.
And, Mr. Manco, I also discussed that with the head of the planning board for so we can prevent that from happening going forward, so they address it upfront. So, the building's just not knocked down and left as a rubble pile?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
No, I have a question. I have a couple things, so I don't know, you want to go first?
No, you go first.
All right. How would we get a key for the senior, the senior center president? He doesn't have a key to the building. What we have to do, make an ordinance, a resolution?
What are we asking for? I'm not, I didn't quite catch, I was taking notes.
The president of the senior club wants a key to the building. He's been there 19 years.
So, we want to give a key to the municipal building to the president of the senior club?
That's correct. There's cameras on there.
Key to the senior center.
To the senior center, I agree with that.
Not the municipal building.
I mean, if that's what the council would like, then yes, then we could do that. We don't, I don't, from a personal standpoint, I don't like giving keys to people.
Right.
That's just me. Okay? Because keys get lost. It changes, I understand the discussion, but that, if the council saw wishes, then yes, of course you can.
Currently, I know if you reserve time there, you can come down and sign it off out at the police station and then return it back, and therefore it's documented who was in the building and at what time.
The Police Department can also just open the door for them remotely as needed.
Oh, they can reopen the door remotely?
Yes. The dispatcher. We had an incident last week where they came in, and I think it was on a Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and they want to come in and decorate. It's a normal borough holiday, so the doors were automatically locked based on the software. And, you know, doors locked, but they came down here, a few phone calls were made, councilman, and the dispatcher hit the button and opened the door. It's been like that for years.
Yeah, he used to have a key, and then they took the last business administrator and took it away from him.
Right. Again, she probably had the same thoughts about key control that I did.
The second one, we had about a sternos at the senior building. They had a slight incident down there, and now they, you told them, Fred, they can't use sternos?
It's been addressed.
Well, I wasn't aware of it, so maybe you could refresh it.
I hadn't heard, had it been, how had, what happened after the incident?
There's a fireman and a fire extinguisher there. I don't know if anybody was aware the fire extinguisher was in the kitchen.
Sorry, I just went to the fact that, you know, they dropped two sternos on the floor and, you know, for whatever reason, didn't put them out, and then said maybe we should just be more cautious and just not do it anymore. The mayor's addressed it or has changed that, then that's okay too.
Well, it was addressed, because I'm the liaison and I haven't heard anything.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm the liaison. I have not heard anything.
About how it was changed, sir?
Yes.
From what I understand, it has not been changed. But then again...
I thought you just said it was addressed.
The mayor mentioned that it had been addressed, sir. I did not.
I haven't heard anything.
Neither have I. The last I heard, sir, was my conversation with the senior council, with the senior center director, was that after the incident and the fire, we're just not going to do it anymore until we come up with a better plan.
So, we have to eat cold food at the Christmas party?
Or not drop inflammable things on the floor and walking away, and go either way. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, accidents do happen. I mean, if that was the case, nobody would drive if you had one accident, right, Fred?
A lot of people shouldn't. Yes, sir.
That's a big fact.
I can name a dozen. But, you know, again, you are correct. Accidents do happen. But if somebody had dropped a sternos in my house and had walked away and done nothing about it, I wouldn't let them play with it anymore in my house either. And the borough senior center is a house. So, I, again, if council wants to override my decision, I have no issues with that either. Or put a fire marshal in there. We got one sitting in the back.
We got a fireman there. We have a fireman that's at the party, so, I mean...
But they didn't do anything, sir. I got it.
Maybe we can use heat lamps.
Whatever the council decides, sir.
I tell my kid not to smoke around gasoline, so, I mean, we're covered there.
I'd like to make a motion that they can use sternos at the senior building and that it'll be supervised by a resident fireman there.
I'll second that.
Third.
Give me one more, and we'll set it on fire, sir.
That's it?
I just need one more.
One more what?
You got a motion, you got a second, you got council president, president's third?
Call for a roll, please.
Council President Revelinsky, Councilman Collins, Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski, Councilman Potter.
Sure.
Councilman Zamborana.
What are we voting on?
I lost it.
So, we've spent the last 10 minutes talking about sternos in the senior center. You didn't talk about the water rates at all, but I got it. I understand how this works.
Aye, 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 aye.
In the words of one of my instructors, Insha'allah. Thank God.
So, they can use sternos again?
But only the blue ones.
You use the green ones, too. Green ones work, too.
So, I did send you an email, Fred. I spoke to the county fire marshal, and he did tell me that sternos were okay to be used, and he recommended using the ones, not with the whole open flame portion. He says that was fine. He says just, he recommended once they were done, done eating, immediately put the caps back on, extinguished the flame, and they're good.
I didn't, I didn't get that email, sir.
Okay.
It passed yesterday, Fred. We had somebody put a cigarette butt in the American Legion garbage, and the bar burned down. So, I mean, what are we going to do, take the bar out of the Legion?
Not my building, sir. Not my building.
I mean, that rationale that you're using?
Does any member, are we done with old business?
No. I'd like to make a motion that we amend, was it Resolution Rules of Council 202503? Can we do that?
So, you're not amending a resolution. According to your Rules of Council, if you want to change a rule, the very last rule says you would have to introduce that at a meeting and then put the resolution forth at the next meeting.
So, we have to...
But as the borough attorney, I had also discussed, since you guys adopt this at REORG, you can just amend it and adopt it at REORG. But either way, you would have to get that to me then, so I could put in the Rules of Council to go out with the REORG packet.
Yeah, I think Councilman Collins, if there's a change to the Rules of Council you'd like to propose, it would be beneficial that you let everybody know in advance so that it can be considered and then included, or the change made to the Rules of Council and the other members of the council understand what that change is going to be.
Well, how do we do that without violating the...
To say.
Yeah, you could just say it now. Yeah, you have to say it ahead of time, and then we can, yes.
Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to change the Section 4. It says, "The clerk prepared the, the clerk shall prepare under the direction of the mayor or president, officer, tentative agreement to each meeting, which agenda shall be delivered to all council members two days prior to regular meeting. The clerk shall perform such duties as may be designated by laws of the state of New Jersey, ordinances, the borough, the Milltown, and the mayor or council." I'd like to change the mayor from that and to comply with state law and put in there the council president or the officer of the council president's choice, councilman of his choice. Do I have to make a motion on that, or?
That's a legal question.
I just did.
You say you've just indicated that you'd like that to be considered as...
Microphone, please.
You indicated you'd like that amendment to be considered for the Rules of Councils when you adopt them at reorganization. So, I think, I mean, at this point, you, you know, that's, that's one that would be considered.
That would be considered.
Yeah, so you, but you indicated the change you want to make. So, certainly, the council members who are going to carry over, and I believe the incoming council member is in the audience today, is aware of that change, and you can consider that at reorganization.
Fine. Thank you.
You got it.
I have a few things. The bill has passed very quickly, but I have, I have something to bring up. It's Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jacobs. I see another bill for $2,590 on there. Mr. Carr, can you, can you tell, I'm pretty close to the figure, but can you tell us the exact figure, to your knowledge, on where we're at with them now for this mediation?
If you give me a minute, I can dig it up, because I think I sent the email out last week that told you what the number was, and that number is still there.
Okay, I did see it. So, it's heading towards $20,000?
Yes, sir, probably. But again, so that, what I sent out last week, plus this bill, is the number.
Okay. This is called mediation, correct?
Yes, sir. This is the mediation that we hired them to do. Yes, sir.
Correct. Does a mediation generally, but Peter, I'm speaking.
Okay, but I'm trying to correct what the topic of the discussion is so that we're all on the same page. So...
Microphone.
My understanding is that that is special labor council who's conducting an investigation, not a mediation. So, just so we understand what the focus of their services is.
But, but for fairness, for those involved, does something like this generally take seven plus or going on seven months and continuing?
I'm not labor counsel, nor am I special labor counsel. And typically, an investigation's going to take as long as your investigator thinks it needs to take in order to gain the information to arrive at a decision.
Okay.
So, you've tasked them with that investigation, and I believe it's got a number of facets to it. They have undertaken that pursuant to the request that the council made and authorized.
But I will say, I'm only one of six here and into the future. I'd rather see us handle this in-house. At the time, I was new, and I agreed that this was something that needed to be done, and after seven months, I just shake my head at this whole situation. And that's me. So, I don't, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but that's how I feel. Okay. And I also would like to bring up, this is from last meeting, but I'd like to speak about concerns regarding the legal issues. I'm sorry. I have something else I want to talk about first. Last meeting, we had an embarrassing situation that was disconcerting to many residents, including one who told me angrily that she was ashamed of my disrespect towards the mayor. I'm going to share a teachable moment here. Our borough government operates according to Robert's Rules of Order, a widely traumatic approach for conducting meetings. It has been a standard for well over 100 years. The one part of Robert's Rules of Order that I know I should have, that should have been adhered to and is part of our council bylaws, and was not, was the reports of officers, boards, and standing committees. An agenda is to be followed from top to bottom, no, and I repeat, no exceptions. What I could have done was to ask for point of order, being that this was a breach of law, a violation to disallow the council from representing or from presenting their reports. The same for the professionals and our borough clerk and our business administrator. No one is above the law here, especially in this. And, okay, what else? Okay. But this violation has created a serious lack of transparency for the residents, and this is all about the residents. Well, I'm done with that. That concludes.
I've got some old business. This one goes to Mr. Vignola. Where are we at all with the title search for the trestle over here?
We have received the title search. There is an issue with the ownership aspect of the property. It has been sent to the owner of the property for them to provide us with some input because it doesn't make a lot of sense, and the owner of the property has not gotten back to me regardless, despite several follow-ups. So, I'm trying to, there's some inconsistency. several follow-ups, so I'm trying to, uh, there's, there's some inconsistency with the ownership due to some tax sales certificates from about twenty-five years ago. So, as, as with most things around here, nothing is cut and dry or easy, so, um, that being said, still trying.
Because I, I just, a resident provided me, if I'm not close enough, maybe I am now, a resident provided me with a copy of the municipal stormwater management plan, prepared March two thousand and five, page seventeen, states alleviating of flooding near Washington Avenue and Main Street by removing abandoned railroad trestle downstream of Mill Pond Dam as a, uh, a possible accountable mediation measure, so, but because this was handed to me, I figured I'd bring it up and see where we are.
Sure.
But it sounds like unfortunately, we're kind of stuck dealing with the owner's response.
We are, and, uh, as everyone may be aware, or may not be aware, Mr. Berger owns that property as well, and, uh, currently, we are in litigation with him over the Ford Avenue property, and I believe that's probably taking precedence over his interest in our interest in the Frank Trestle.
Fair enough.
So it sounds like we got a better chance of seeing Santa Claus come down the chimney.
That, that's not gonna happen.
So, I mean, and he's due pretty soon.
I didn't see him, so...
You gotta put sternos in your fireplace.
Yes, sir. The situation with the, the footbridge, um, the, the, last year when the mayor ran, he, he ran on,
Microphone, please.
He ran on, on basically, um, taking over the, that area there, um, but considering the litigation, why, have you advised him that it's not wise to, to, uh, to put the town in, in, in a possible jeopardy?
I'm not sure how we would, how the town would be in jeopardy, Councilman Poznanski.
You might not call it jeopardy, but dealing with Mr. Berger, we're dealing with, with Mr. Berger, he owes, is it, is it over six million dollars that he owes in taxes?
Uh, he does, well, he doesn't owe us any taxes, he owns companies that, or he has an ownership interest in companies that owe taxes to the borough, just so we can be in safe danger.
But he thumbs his nose at, at Milltown, our residents, that, that, people here have grown up seeing nothing but, but a, 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 a derelict site on that property, and, and we, we, we want to play, play footsie with him. I, I really don't, I don't...
Not playing footsie with him. I promise.
I'm not saying you. But I don't think, I don't think we should be dealing with him, or doing favors for him.
I don't know that anyone's offered to do a favor for him, I believe there was some interest in trying to ascertain the ownership of the property in an attempt to confirm who the owner's was, uh, whether there were any easements that impacted the property that would prevent the borough from acquiring it and undertaking a project which might provide alternate access, uh, you know, around the pond. So, the first step was to have a title search done, to determine, A, who owned it, and B, whether there was any impediment to the use, the first item that was identified was the fact that, um, there's some question over ownership, and that's what we're trying to work through now. So, I mean, ultimately, if the borough was interested, the borough would need to obtain appraisals and acquire it for fair market value, um, and that's what I believe the interest was.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any new business to bring before council?
I've got one. Making the recommendation that next year, the borough council invest in lapel mics, um, so that we don't have to be told to constantly lean forward and use the microphones.
No, I like to yell at you. Keeps me awake.
See, actually, it, it does come up legitimately, um, when, as, as you guys know, that I was coming back from a, a work event in Massachusetts, and I arrived about halfway through the meeting, and throughout the duration of that meeting, there's only so much that you can actually hear, um, so I do appreciate our clerk telling us to lean forward and use the microphone, because quite frankly, when Mr. Carr spoke on a few times, while I didn't always want to hear what he had to say, there's a lot of times I couldn't hear what he had to say, so. That being said, we should probably do something about the recording capabilities so that we can convey the messages that are brought up here to the residents properly. That's all I got.
Got any new business?
No new business? Okay. Open to the public, the public comment portion of this meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their comments or concerns. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from the comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during public input part of the meeting should be limited to five minutes, and they may, after other speakers have finished, may be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period.
Russ Einbinder, one fifty-two Main, North Main Street, Robert Showman, uh, North Dirks, right?
No.
North Moats?
Yes.
See, I always get it wrong, I pick them up, I don't even know the name of the street, it's pretty bad, but we need to know the name of the streets, because Robert and I are starting tomorrow night. Um, this, this camera he has here, you know, those nice videos you see every year, all the houses, for the last ten years, this is your cameraman, so everybody can thank Robert. You can do it actually, one o'clock, I think, right? I think it's like almost twelve. Yeah, you've been doing this since, since, since in grade school, it's amazing, and he's got to steady your arm than I do, believe it or not, because if you think it shakes now, you should see when I try and do it. But we're gonna start tomorrow, and hopefully, if, and get it between the raindrops the next few days, after that, we'll finish, and sometime next week, it'll be on Channel fifteen. He also took a lot of video the night with Santa, we have stuff from the last couple of big town events that we have to finish editing, hopefully that'll be on TV soon, so during the Christmas break, you're gonna see a whole glut of stuff on YouTube on Channel fifteen. Thank you again.
Good evening, guys. So, at the last council meeting, I made a little bit of, uh...
I need your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Pasquali Barascondal, eleven Alba Avenue. Mike Posnov?
Yes, thank you.
The last council meeting, I made a little bit personal with Mayor Murray, I'm here to apologize to you, uh, let's try to continue the relationship that we want to have, that we should have, we could have. Uh, my wife made me realize that that was the wrong thing that I did, so, my wife is here now, and she can go watch the Cowboys now. So anyway, at the end of the day, let's make our town as a friendly community as possible. Moving forward to Richard Revolinsky, appreciate that you came up with this nine-dollar thing. As you guys know, I love the town, I love the residents of the town, been here for thirty-six years now, um, owned multiple businesses, few businesses, everybody always supported me, so it's been very appreciative. My main concern was always the residents, even though I'm not an electric official, I'll never be, but, at the end of the day, seniors, you know, they're in danger of losing houses and this in the economy, ba-ba-da-ba-da-ba. Social Security, the check, it is what it is, they're always gonna get the same one. Younger crowd, younger couples, we kids having difficult times. I tend to believe that the economy's plummeting a little bit, uh, I talked to different mayors from different towns, larger towns, and they start to advise that. You know, here we are little, so it comes in a little later with us. So the rates, if it, they are only nine dollars, it's great, uh, much, much appreciated, I'm sure the residents are too, there's a lot of single parents, uh, that they are struggling, I eat a lot in the pizzeria, so I'm here to support them. And furthermore, I would like to ask you guys if this could be possible, to create an ordinance, right, that this way, these rates could be raised, it doesn't matter if it's water, sewer, or electric, every year. You know, it doesn't matter, you guys pick the date, January first, June first, December first, that this way, people already know what to expect, because it's always one thing versus another, Republicans blame the Democrats, Democrats blame the Republicans. And who pays for this is really the residents, because God forbid there is a water rate that goes up a hundred percent, I don't know, I got all kinds of numbers in my head, but people can do that, people can afford that. If you guys could create an ordinance that could go up three to five percent a year, like a cost of living, I can only raise my pizza five percent a year, it's a cost of living, I can't raise it a hundred percent. So if you guys could do that, and I remember talking to Cravio...
It's, it's in this ordinance.
Okay, good.
It's in there.
Because I remember talking to Cravio back twenty-five years ago, I said, eventually, Dave, unfortunately, the water, the sewer, the electric, is gonna be the death of some Milltown people, and we don't want that to happen. You know, so, appreciate all you guys, uh, good job that you do, once again, I apologize to you, Mayor, guys, let's have a Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So back to the water rates.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rosa Tavoris, one hundred Riva Avenue. So the two ordinances that are on the table are going to yield a different amount. Do we know what that amount is? You had your little computer program, Excel sheet last time, and you broke it all down for us, is that gonna be part of the next meeting?
I'm gonna be here on the twenty-third, so if you'd like that as an early Christmas present, I'd be happy to have the Excel file up and do it, um, but are you asking about how much revenue it's actually generating towards the operating budget, or are you looking for what the total dollars is going to be per thousand gallons usage?
No, what the revenue would be at the end for the township and how that will help us, right? So one, maybe we'll have an overage of, I don't know, a hundred thousand, the other may yield an overage of two hundred thousand dollars, and so with that, then, what happens to that overage?
Well, that, that's gonna be dependent on the people who are in charge here next year of what happens to that overage, um, but I would believe that, or like to think that they'll use it for things like if we need a truck instead of bonding for it, or if we have an emergency repair like we did on Ryder's Lane for eighty thousand, that the money's there. The last run on the numbers that I did was, I think it was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in anticipated additional revenue, but Councilman Potter did point out that ACME's not gonna be there next year, so then I subtracted that out, which was, I think, around thirty thousand dollars, so that puts us just around that eighty, ninety thousand dollars in additional surplus, assuming that everyone uses the same amount of water that they did in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
And that's, that to me is a little close for comfort, um, and, you know, we are somewhat fortunate that the hundred and fifty dollar increase did stick around for another quarter, because that will generate around three hundred and fifty thousand, so if all things go right by the time we're sitting here next year, we should have in surplus for the burrows operating an additional about four hundred thousand dollars to, you know, rainy day kind of money, or to offset some, you know, costs as they come up, but shouldn't be looked at as part of our routine operating budget, because if so, we're gonna be right back to where we were.
To where we started, right, which, so, from what I understand, the reason we are where we are is because we've kicked the can down the road for much too long, right? So, okay, we're here now, hopefully we've learned the lesson, we can move forward, so... You said two things at the last meeting, which was, um, that, and we don't have enough revenue coming in, so what else can we do, or what can be brought in for additional revenue, other than raising our taxes?
Well, borough or municipal revenue comes in basically four forms, right? You have taxes, you've got fines, you've got fees and penalties, and those could be homeowners not taking care of their property who get a fine or, or violation, traffic ordinance, you know, parking ordinances, things like that, and, um, and then interest. Other than that, the borough really doesn't have any other sort of diverse revenue generating scheme, it's not like a business we can just throw another product on the shelf, uh, we do rent park space for people who want to use it, but the amount of money that comes from that is normal.
So bringing in more businesses into town wouldn't necessarily add more revenue?
Yeah, well, business is what they...
How do we do that, right? Like, how do you make the town attractive so that businesses want to come here? Right? And I'm sure that's all tied in with the whole Ford Avenue redevelopment thing, which isn't happening. Okay, okay. So... Long-term planning, five years from now, is New Brunswick Water the only game in town for us?
No.
Okay. So, I know, you know, we're here now, we, we got at least five years to go with them, that's what, right, kind of what's on the table, but I think last meeting, there was some conversation about other townships and what they do in terms of their water suppliers, and that then we don't have to deal with broken water mains, and that that's all inclusive in whatever contract we have with them. So, how do we start that process, and when do we start it, and shouldn't, should we be starting it now for five years down the line?
Yeah, yeah, it, it takes several years to implement it, um, so to, you, you asked a couple different things there, let me try and address...
I have a tendency to do that.
No, it's okay, um, I, as do I, uh, so as far as municipalities, we have New Brunswick, who currently provides us with water and takes our sewage flow, um, you have East Brunswick, which we already have a pipe that connects the two towns, so if they had the capacity and interest, East Brunswick could buy our water system from us and operate it, and it would all be on them.
And sewer, and everything, the whole thing.
It, it would have to be, if they were interested, of course, and the same goes for North Brunswick, North Brunswick has a treatment plant on Canal Road, they would have the capacity, I believe, to provide the borough with sufficient water supply. Then you run into the sewer with North Brunswick, the sewer, we have a forced main that goes up Main Street and hits George's Road over by the McDonald's in North Brunswick, um, about a quarter of a mile up the way, that's where it dumps into gravity, it goes through New Brunswick from there, so we would have to find a new place to put our sewage, because New Brunswick bills our sewage based on how much water we buy, so we'd either be paying New Brunswick for sewage and North Brunswick for water, the other option is the private entities, you've got, um, Middlesex Water Company, which is local, they provide in bulk to the city or township of East Brunswick, and you've got New Jersey American, which I believe actually owns the treatment plant on Canal Road for North Brunswick, so out of those two private entities, both of which, when they procure a system, actually want to buy the water and sewer, because they go hand in hand, um, we have reached out to both of those in the past, and earlier this year, the mayor and I had reached out to the gentleman in New Jersey American to see if he'd be interested in starting up these conversations again, to see if it's even viable, uh, and I think, where did, where did we leave off with, with him, that was, uh, four, five months ago, maybe, was the last real communication?
Yes. Yeah, it kind of, because we were trying to focus on with Mr. Vignola, the, the water rates and trying to get that straightened out, it kind of got put on the back burner, uh, which hopefully it will be, uh, brought, uh, to the forefront again, uh, not to overburden Mr. Vignola, but that we could continue to keep moving forward with that, because it's something that we, we need to, five years goes quick.
It does.
It's, it's, when you plan for five years, it's like tomorrow.
Right, right.
But tho, those are basically our, our local options, um, that, that could be viable, we haven't talked to the other municipalities, uh, I know the private entities were interested, I believe, uh, Middlesex Water Company is currently dealing with Highland Park to begin sort of a transition period where they're operating and maintaining their system, in the hopes that they do such a good job that it's an easy transition to them acquiring that system.
I think it makes sense long-term, right, to let these people who have been handling water and sewer forever, to just let them do it, like, it's kind of rein, I mean, I, I don't know in terms of, uh, do we need that revenue, but we're not making money on the bright, it's not, it's, it's a liability, it's not an asset, so, okay.
Yeah, and, and actually, if you, if you go online and you look at some of them, uh, like New Jersey American had purchased, uh, I believe it was Mannville and Somerville, and there's, there's some good information out there on why the towns did that and took that approach, and really, it was the economies of scale, their, their municipality, their local government was too small to try and operate it, it was a liability, and so they, they handed it off to someone who does it for a living.
Right, that's my point. That's it, thank you.
Lee Weisenberger, ninety-nine JFK Drive. Relating to the title search here now on a trestle, is that available to the public? Relating to the title search here now on a trestle, is that available to the public?
It probably is, yes. I'm trying to think, I mean, I'm going through what we have it for, but I will consider that, and I'll get you an answer.
Okay.
Because it's part of property, attempted property acquisition for the borough, so...
Appreciate it.
You got it.
Related to that, over the years, Middlesex County has archived records. Milltown sends records to them. They have stuff in storage. The problem with that, that I see from our standpoint out here, what records are archived? What do we send to them? Is there a list?
Yeah, as I told you when you came to the office, I log into a system. All that's over there right now is old minutes and ordinances.
But, that's what I'm saying, it's just that kind of stuff. Because I'm finding out here now, within our municipal building, each department has, they destroy records after a solo amount of time. Each department has a different amount of time, and they get rid of stuff.
So...
I'm just curious, what we're destroying?
Well, it's all, you have to get permission from the state. They have a records retention schedule, and everything has a different retention. You know, some things are three years, some things are considered permanent records, so it all depends on the document, but departments can't just shred it, they have to put in for approval. It comes to me as the records custodian, I look it over, make sure it falls within the guidelines of the years that can be destroyed. I approve it, and then it goes to the state for their approval. Once they approve it, that's when the records can be destroyed. But, everything has a different retention schedule, so depending on what you're looking for, in the retention schedule of that document, and what year you're looking for, it may or may not have been destroyed. But, it all has to be within the state guidelines.
But, that's the question mark. Can we get an itemized list of what is retained, for how long, what gets destroyed?
Yeah, if you go onto the state website, there, you look up records retention, it'll give you every single government document in the years when you can destroy, and how long you have to hang on to it before you destroy. For instance, vital records, marriage license application, 75 years. You know, food license applications, three years, off the top of my head. Dog license applications, three years. I know stuff in my office, other offices, when it comes to me, I have to look that up, but I can give you most of the stuff that come ordinances, resolution, the originals, permanent, forever. That's why those eventually make their way down to our county's storage facility, because we're running out of space here. But, tax duplicate books, permanent record. There's certain retention for different things, so that's easily accessible by anybody by going to the doors website and looking up Artemis Records Retention, and looking what it is that you want.
I get that. I brought this up in the past on records, and it was like, everything's retained, everything's kept, minutes, whatnot, going back, and now I find out, no.
Well, minutes are, oh, no. Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about with minutes. Minutes are always kept, that's a permanent record.
And, but those minutes are recordings of meetings?
Recordings don't have, recordings only have to be retained until the minutes are accepted, and then you don't have to keep them. I still have all the minutes from this year, because I haven't, like, I haven't put in for destruction, but I don't know what recording system they even used in the 90s, but once the minutes are approved, those recordings don't have to be kept.
That's what I'm saying, but when you write up the minutes of the meeting that come out on our website, that's just a small synopsis of what's said. And no offense, a lot of time, it doesn't agree with what's said.
Well, that's what council approves. I mean, minutes are not supposed to be a court transcript or a verbatim of what is said, it's supposed to be a brief description of what was discussed at a meeting. If they want a, if a transcript is wanted, that's when you call in a transcriber, just like when you have a planning board meeting, an applicant can bring a court transcriber in to do verbatim, but minutes are not supposed to be verbatim, it's supposed to just give a brief description of the discussion that took place.
Okay. Good enough for now. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing no further audience comments, council comments. Is there anybody from council that they would like to bring up at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask our borough engineer, Mike, is there anything kind of filter or something we can put on our water system that would eliminate those contaminants, or something we could put in before it goes through our filter? I don't know how you would do that.
Are you talking about the disinfectant byproducts, the TTHMs?
Well, what Fred was talking about, the trichorol methanes or something.
That's it, yes, sir, the byproduct.
The answer is, there are filters that you can purchase, that's right. What usually happens is, in a treatment plant, they have these types of filters. You don't really have a treatment plant, you purchase treated water from the project, so that it would mean the construction of a water plant. And I wouldn't recommend that residents use it at home, because these filters require maintenance, and they're fairly expensive. But, I think the borough has a pretty good plan, and as Mr. Carr indicated, it looks like your next, your latest round of testing has been favorable, so with the procedures they're using, I think it should hopefully get it down to where you need to. As he said, it's a rolling average, and the fact that your latest readings have come down is good news for all of us.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd just like to say, I was ecstatic that Santa showed up the other night at the tree lighting. I don't know how he times it every year, makes time for Milltown, and knows when our tree is actually turning on. It's fantastic. I'd also like to point out that there is a rumor going around that the flagpoles in town were painted with a peppermint-flavored paint. That is not true. Please do not lick any of the flagpoles this winter. Not only does it not taste like peppermint, but you'll probably get some white paint on your tongue. With that, wish everyone a happy holiday season, but we do have one more meeting coming up, so I'm excited.
I have a question for Mr. Vignolo. I think the residents are happy to hear that there's no taxes owed on Ford Avenue any longer. Am I correct?
I don't think I said that at all.
Microphone.
I don't believe that's what I said, Councilman Poznanski.
Who, well, who owes, who owes the tax for their, because I did bring that up, and you said he owes the creditors.
No, I said that, I said that Mr. Berger owns entities that owe back taxes to the borough, is what I said.
Because what I said was that Berger owes the back taxes.
Right.
And I'm, so it's a matter of semantics, then?
Well, it's, no, it's who owes the money, so...
So, his business owes the money, so he doesn't owe it, his business owes the money.
A business in which he is, I do not know the entire ownership structure of the entities that own the properties on Ford Avenue. I know that Mr. Berger is one of the individuals who has an ownership interest in.
Right. So, they owe at least $6 million in taxes?
Probably somewhere between $5 and $1/2 and $6, yeah.
Okay. So, when they don't pay their taxes, who makes up, who makes up for their taxes? Because we get a tax bill due, and people, residents pay the taxes, so who pays that share of the taxes?
No one is paying those taxes right now. So, the municipal services that would be provided by that tax revenue would not be capable of being provided, or you'd have to find, you know, another source, because those aren't being sold at tax sale, because no one's buying them anymore.
Well, don't part of our taxes chip in to pay his share of the taxes until he pays up?
It's not being, I was gonna say, I'm not someone in municipal finance, so I would defer to somebody who does that.
Okay.
As to how we account for the lost tax revenue from Ford Avenue.
Okay.
But, those entities are also in bankruptcy presently.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of other things. One is, I'd like to honor the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, which was December 7th, 1941. I'd like to honor, it's the 83rd anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor by the Japanese forces on December 7th, 1941. This is to honor fearless military, especially the Navy, and those that served the country and were killed that day. There was a poster that was distributed widely as a rallying cry for the grieving nation, and here was a quotation from Lincoln's Gettysburg Address. It read, "We are highly, we hear highly resolved that those dead shall not have died in vain. This was to give comfort to a stunned and grieving country, and to remind them of the sacrifice of our great military in previous wars."
I'd just like to say, happy holidays to all the residents and all the listeners tonight, and I will at next meeting, too.
Mr. Mayor, I just have three small items. As our borough clerk, Monica Orlando, said, reorg is coming. There are plenty of volunteer spots available on many committees in town, including human relations and revitalization. We've had some folks that have moved out of town, so it's always good to have a bigger pool of people to kind of pull these things together, especially when it comes to HRC and Milltown Day and the Main Street planners. I was not able to get to the tree lighting, I was not able to get to the fire department dinner due to previous commitments. I was able, however, to get to the winter concert at the senior center on Saturday from 2:30 to 4:00. Shout out to the Central Wind Ensemble, which is basically run by and directed by Nick Santoro and Barbara Santoro, who are residents in town. Wonderful event, I've been there five years in a row. Every time, I think they're not gonna make it any better, they kick it up, and it just makes it even better. Highly recommend that next year, first Saturday in December, that you make it. And then my last item is, I'd like to just acknowledge the passing of former councilman Nicholas Legati's wife, Joy. She passed away on December 1st after a long battle with Alzheimer's. If you knew Joy, her name was perfect. She was sassy, she was crooked a smile, and quick with a joke. Longtime Milltown Democratic Organization Committee woman. You know, if you see this Legati, say, hey, you know, so sorry for your loss to you, to Mr. Legati, and his two daughters, Marissa and Elizabeth. And that concludes my report.
I'll close, council comments, I have no comments. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2024-332?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public bodies of the opinions of circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, whereas minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County and Middlesex State of New Jersey, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
You heard the reading of this resolution?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Revolinski, second by Councilman Collins. Go on, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, roll call vote.
Can we have a roll call vote on that, Mr. Mayor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
You have five minutes.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go, I think. Yeah, we're gonna go to the room. You're going in the room. First one. All right.